This is the Wapakia Area School District Board of Education meeting.
I'm good, I'm good.
I'd like to thank everyone for making time in their schedules this evening. I know in the summertime it's hard to give up an evening that's not raining, although we do have air conditioning, so that's good. The signs show open session. We, I believe we have the basketball league going this evening, so we'll probably keep that door somewhat closed just to mitigate some of the noise from the boys' basketball league. With that, I am going to ask Mrs. Pinkerton to lead us in the block, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, let the record reflect, all members of the board are present.
Yeah, did you get a chance to see? Okay. Oh, sorry. We'll maybe talk about it.
No.
Yeah.
Everybody's got their... Do you have one to use there, Mark?
Yeah, boy.
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
It's the community thing. I'm helping the community.
Okay, with that, look for approval of the agenda, motion?
So move.
Motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who was that?
Aye.
Sandy, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Public comment? If anyone wishes to address the board this evening?
Since there's nobody, I would like to just put in a word for the Rotary Club and they're having the Wapakia Zone in the evening with musical theater. And I encourage everybody to go. If they haven't gone before, you will be happy to go. It's a free will offering. And the Rotary Club does a lot for the school district.
And what's the date on that, Steve?
Saturday night at seven.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to approval of the minutes. We'll start with the only ones in front of us. June 11, 2019, regular board meeting. Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Moves us on to communications. We'll start with the district administrator's report. And before he starts, welcome to your first report to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been exciting. What is this, three, four, four days, right? Three days last week and today. Because yesterday I was moving.
Oh, that's right.
So it's going really well. Really having a good time and really enjoying the staff and the admin team and everybody. It's just very exciting for me, a lot of learning. And I think we're trying to get our first admin meeting. Carol's gonna send out, if she hasn't already. We're gonna try to do it today, or today, Thursday at eight? Thursday at eight, we're gonna try to get together. Just, I just feel so far behind, I need to get you guys together here. But the other thing I really want to talk about, or I guess this isn't a discussion, but I want to, I'd really like to have at least one board meeting or special, like a retreat, to have a conversation with the board. I'd like to talk about expectations and roles, responsibilities types of things and common commitments, our norms, that things that we all kind of agree to. And I remember during my interview, I asked if we would be willing to do a book study. And I have this resource and it's really powerful. And it's the School Board Field Book, Leading with Vision. And Carol has already ordered some. And I'm hoping that that is something that'd be okay with you as board?
I'm a bit weary.
Be interested in and maybe take a few months and go through a chat. I don't, my goal, and I don't know where you guys feel, and this is something that like we would talk about in these retreats. I like, I like the business meetings to be succinct and efficient and not more than an hour, if, unless...
Okay, we're moving on from the district.
That would work.
And so if you guys are okay, we'll work on, maybe Carol can figure out through your Google, what is it, Google forum or invite?
Doodlepoo.
Doodlepoo. Come up with some dates where the eight of us could meet together on this, okay?
Possibly.
It is, it really is a short read and it gets a lot of good discussion. And I think you're gonna like it. So we'll work on that. And you know, right now, my biggest thing is, besides listening and learning, I'm trying to build relationships with the staff and the admin team and you guys. Those are the big two overarching things right now, is trust and relationships. So that's kind of the focus. And you know, the other thing, I'm gonna ask you questions like, you want a weekly update? How much communication? What are the types that you want me to share with you and don't? And kind of a carryover to the forum, the survey that I sent you folks last week? Just dig deeper into the weeds of those types of things. So that we're on the same page. Thank you.
Four days and you're already behind. That moves us on to the WLC MTSS gold ratings.
Yes, I put these in because one of my first days, I saw this and I thought this was absolutely wonderful. I know the kind of work that the principals and the teachers have put into this PBIS and the work with through the RTI Center. And I just wanted to give them the recognition and get it on the record that these are pretty important accomplishments and this work should get that attention for both, I think it's the middle school and WLC, is that right? This one is WLC. They received the gold level for the behavior, reading and math. And then the middle school...
For those that may be watching or watched the film, only 11 schools in the state are currently recognized at that gold level.
There's the middle school. The gold, John, am I right that that's two years in a row?
That is correct.
And here's the middle school with the bronze level in behavior, silver in reading and silver in math. So just terrific work, guys. Thank you.
Very good. We also received a thank you from the DI team.
Let me see. Yes. That was nice.
Do we know how they placed? There was a notice on the paper, but I don't remember what it said. Okay. Was this a middle school or a high school team? It was what? High school team? First of all. Okay. Great.
I think they should be certainly commended for sending a note. It's something that's unfortunately dropping by the wayside with many of our youth. And so whoever may have encouraged them or suggested that, or if it was on their own, very nice and I appreciate that. We'll move on to board reports. Report on meetings attended or school visits. I suspect this will be a little thin.
Yeah.
None.
Okay. Picks us on to upcoming meetings. August 13, a regular board meeting is scheduled for 5:15. I know Carol is working on a couple of other meetings that we are yet to secure a date for.
Correct. I have narrowed down some of the things, dates that were available and sent them on to the city to see if any of those dates work for them, but I have not heard back from the city yet.
And I think I'm the only one who is going over on Friday to Appleton to the Equity Conference.
Yeah, I didn't hear from anybody else.
Okay. So I'll be going over on Friday to that. And I'll have a report, I hope, for the August meeting.
Very good, thank you. Personnel committee.
Excuse me. The committee met. June 13 at six o'clock and all of our board members were present. We approved the agenda. Excuse me. And the first thing on the agenda was the support staff handbook. The handbook was updated because we needed to incorporate our food service employees who are now back as our employees. Excuse me. So we included them in the support staff handbook. So now they're included, all of that. The second thing was the nurses handbook. Up until now, items that are included in the handbook were always included in the nurses contracts. But we thought it would be better to have it laid out in a handbook. So Carol and Maureen put together the handbook and we approved it. Then we had a good discussion on salary compensation and cat aid emotion that we go with a 2.44 increase for teachers and a $500 additional stipend for those employees that are the 10 masters that are ESO. And that carried unanimously. And then we talked about credit reimbursement for administrators because there's some discrepancy as to...
There was a second motion regarding support staff and the raise, the next paragraph.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was scrolling down. Another motion was made by Cat to increase 2.44 for all the other employee groups except food service. We didn't include them because they got their raises in January and the turnaround took place. Then we went on to credit, thank you. We went on to credit reimbursement for administrators. And there was quite a discussion on this because there's a discrepancy in how reimbursement is handled as, is it taxable, non-taxable? Is it all taxable, is some taxable? And it's pretty cloudy as to the IRS and administration and how it's handled. It could be a very great interpretation. So the board instructed Carol, who was gonna be working with our auditors, to present it to them so that they could get a clear cut definition as to how we should pay out reimbursement for credits. So we don't know if that has had to go?
Actually...
Should we do it? Or not?
Before we do that, do we have to board, the board have to board?
We will, we will take each of those as individual motions.
Yeah, okay.
Betty, if you don't mind, could I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
I had a brief communication with Steve and being briefed on it from the admin team, different individuals. And I talked to Carol. What I'd like to do with this, you know, I read through this whole situation, I read through the whole packet. And I'd like to work with Boardman and Clark. Rick Verstegen is one of the people who helped write that Boardman and Clark brief that Carol showed. And actually, I spoke to him today. And we were so busy, we weren't able to get to him that packet of information that was all put together. So the idea is, as soon as possible, get that to Boardman and Clark. And they're going to write, just like Macy did, but it's going to not be vague.
Okay.
It has to give us some specific direction, which way, you know. So that's, Carol and I met and we talked about that. And I met with Mark as well. I think I understand where both sides are coming from and what... That we just need guidance from needle comms open. So I'm hoping we can get that taken care of this week. At least I'll know forward the attorney advisors, which we will then.
Good.
Can I ask one question about that? So when you mentioned that you can have them rewrite it so it's not vague. So is the last document, just help me refresh my memory. The last document that we got that explained it and laid it out the last meeting, was that from Macy's office or was that from, when you're explaining the...
We had two.
You have several.
Two. We had one from Jim Macy's office and then we had one from Carol.
And then the one from Macy's office you're referring to?
I'm referring to that and the Boardman and Clark one, who left it up to some level of interpretation.
Right.
Virtually all of them leave it to a level of interpretation.
So what we're gonna do, Mark, is we're gonna send all of those documents, including Macy's, to Rick. And they have a specialist who actually was the main author of that. And they're gonna weigh in on our specific situation. From what I've learned on what these, and his gray areas, these vague areas are, and tell us to the best of their ability. And if it's vague, well, that's not acceptable.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you for their report. We'll go by individual item as to what recommendation is a committee made to the board.
So the nurses handbook would be the first.
Okay, so the motion advanced to the board is to approve the nurses handbook as written?
That's right. There were a few little typo and kind of things.
As amended?
Right.
Okay. Being a committee motion or forward by the committee, that does not need a second. Is there any discussion?
So Carol, excuse me, you have the, you've made the changes on the document that we're gonna eventually file.
The nurses one had very, almost nothing. It was like commas spelling. The support staff handbook had more.
Yeah, okay.
Other discussion, questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The second is the recommendation for the support staff handbook with the typos changed.
And those have had, this is a support staff? Those have been adjusted?
Yes.
Okay. Being a recommendation coming out of committee, it does not need a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Thank you.
The next recommendation was on the salary compensation, where the board gives a 2.44 increase for teachers and a $500 additional pay stipend to those in the 10 and 30%. And that carried unanimously.
Okay. Coming out of committee, that does not need a second. Is there any discussion? Comments? Nothing? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Very good, thank you. Well, actually, did you abstain from that vote?
I didn't say anything.
Okay. You should probably, you should probably go on record as having...
Saying, saying that because, yes.
Salary increases.
Yep.
All right.
Yes, family.
Six oh one.
Explain what?
I have two, son and a daughter-in-law.
Okay, so if you, if you have the record reflect that, please. Okay.
No, the next, there's one more. The next motion was a 2.44 increase, increase for all the employee groups except for food service. But we did put the stipulation that we would be looking at support staff, comparables for support staff salaries. And Carol is gonna get that to us in September.
Okay.
Because that's the one area we thought should be a little higher, maybe a 2.44.
Recommendation coming out of committee does not need a second. Is there any discussion? Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Thank you. Anything else from the personnel committee?
Yeah, before we leave the personnel, is it okay?
As long as it's on the agenda, you know. Go ahead.
Well, it's financially related. I thought maybe it'd be a good time to ask this.
You can start, but don't be offending if I cut you off.
Okay, that's fine. I was just gonna ask Carol, Carol, because we were, the last meeting, we talked a lot about the budget and the cost of things and so on. Can you give us a little update on where we stand now after the recent Wisconsin budget was passed? Can you give us an idea of where, how we have been either helped or hindered?
I could do it all on G, I don't G too, if you want me.
If that's where that would belong.
Okay, year-to-date expenses versus budget step size. Okay, let's do it then. I'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. I didn't cut you off because it's on the agenda.
No, I didn't know if we...
It is on the agenda.
I see, I see that now, yeah. Okay, good.
Okay, very good. Policy committee.
Well, as you know, the policy committee had lots of policies. That's why they're all on your agenda. I don't know if we have to do each one individually here or not. But we had a long meeting. Ron, I'm sorry to say, we kind of went past the hour long and only got halfway done in about three hours. So, and that's partly because we had a lot of policies that had been sort of stacked up that we hadn't gotten to for a variety of reasons and had been put off. So we have, as you see, a whole lot of policies that we passed, but we still have, I'm gonna say roughly half that we didn't get to just for because of time. So we met, the policy committee met. And I think with the exception of Betty, everybody was here. And we went through all of these. So if we have to take them individually, so be it. But if we wanna make a motion to take them all?
I'd like to talk about the last two, the deletions, because I, after thinking about those, I have a question. Would I be willing to make a motion to approve the policies list? Let me see if I can get to my agenda.
That would be, well, let's just say one through 15.
One through 15.
To start with, and then there's a couple of deletes.
Yeah, and then we'll talk about the deletes.
Okay.
In regards to this, I was looking at some of these over the weekend. And I know I had a conversation with Steve about policy 600 fiscal management, student fee schedule.
Correct.
And the conversation is around altering some language in here that would reflect a $25, a mandatory $25 insurance purchase for the Chromebook. It would be a technology fee. It's my understanding from talking with Carol that we had done something similar to that, like a couple of years ago. For some reason, we went away from it.
Okay.
And it's causing some concerns administratively in regards to the replacement plan.
Okay.
And so if it's okay, if you would table that one.
Okay.
I have time to work with Steve and the admin team to come up with...
A wording that might include that. Certainly, since we're gonna come back to the other ones anyway, we'll just add that. So Sandy, if that would be okay, to pull that one out, is that okay with you?
So is it policy 656 and then R1 and R2?
Just number nine.
Just number nine, the R1, the student fee schedule.
Right.
Okay. Then I would move approval of policy 110, 151, 362.1, 443.5, 4.5, 453.3, Form 53.3, R1, 656, 656, R2, 722.5, 723.3, 772.1, 831, 852.
Okay.
That is actually, yeah.
Could you go back to the number 11, 722?
722.5.
Did you?
I thought I did. But if I didn't, it's...
You probably did, but I, you were going faster than I was reading.
Yeah, that's okay. It's one through eight and then 10 through 15.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Both the original writing, so... Okay. Motion and second discussion on policies. And I won't go into the policy numbers, but those listed on the agenda as numbers one through eight and 10 through 15. There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so Sandy, your concerns?
The two that were being deleted related to the use of transportation, buses for extracurricular activities. And it starts out by saying, "All requests..." And I understand we're with Go Rightway now and that that was part of the discussion about the use and for recommending deletion.
Right.
But what these policies do is they say that all requests for the use of transportation facilities, I'm reading that as buses, that are not included in the budget, must be approved. And that's gonna be true whether we own our buses or whether we don't own our buses. And so I would hate to remove this policy without, if there's some procedural, such requests are, you know, they come to the building principal because it would be covered under the building principal's budget for the most part, and then they're forwarded to the transportation. And then the second one, the transportation supervisor, the second one also relates to... Sorry, I closed it.
So are you thinking that we should pull those and look at those as we will the other ones?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not ready to delete those. And then it says, "The use of school transportation facilities, buses shall require them per mile charge to be assessed, the use of." And that that would be computed. And I know that maybe that refers to, you know, if you're on a field trip. Is that...
In the past, it was, when we owned our own buses, there was a computation that we had came up with of a formula.
So you attributed it to a particular sport or a particular building?
And now Rightway determines the cost of it. We don't have a formula anymore that can determine it.
So this is in regard to 752, correct?
Yes, this is 752. Nonetheless, there is a cost assess. And so rather than delete this, I think we just modify it so that it reflects what we're asking.
So you're suggesting that we table that one at this point in time for further review?
Yes, both of those.
Okay. The one about the requesting the bus for a trip, do we not cover that somewhere else in terms of like field trips covers?
Well, those are the really far away, the distant, long distance ones.
Yeah, the overnights.
Yeah, where the students are doing fundraising to pay for a lot of costs.
But not just a trip to Milwaukee to the museum and back? We don't have language on it?
We don't.
Okay. That's fine. All right, well, let's pull those two then. And we'll look at them again when we, when we look at the rest.
Sounds good.
Another three-hour meeting.
So actually, so actually, there are three?
There are actually three.
Right.
The student fee schedule and then 16 and 17.
We already voted on the first one. We skipped over that one.
Right. Steve?
I just wanted to let Ron know that we really were in a meeting four hours and 23 minutes.
Yeah, you wrote it down.
Wow.
To get the truth out.
Could you plan on having long meetings?
You serious?
It was four hours and 23 minutes.
There's no one that I run.
And those are the, and those are the easy ones, just so you know.
I thought you wanted insured meetings, Steve.
I do. But I was just letting you know that it wasn't insured as he said.
Okay. So anything else from the policy committee?
The only thing is, and Carol will help us again, we're setting up a date, I'm assuming, for policy again ASAP. And I know that that, you know, it's gonna be in the future somewhere. But we had hoped, that was our hope once upon a time, to try and look at the other half before the August meeting. And we were looking at possibly somewhere in the first two weeks of August to have a meeting. I know that's just a possibility right now. But it is a small, I mean, it's just committee. So there's just the three of us on the committee and everybody else can make it if they can. And are welcome to come, but possible.
Do we have a motion and second on the table? For table?
Do we have a motion and second on the table, for tabling those three? Sandy made a motion, but I didn't hear a second or a vote.
Actually, if they have not been brought forward, I guess we can make a formal tabling, but I don't think it's necessary. It's just understood that as there's not a motion to approve, that they're being remanded back to the Policy Committee. So, those would be policies, six five six, R one, seven five, one point three, and seven five two are remanded back to committee.
Correct.
Good, very good.
And if nothing else, that's our report.
Buildings and Grounds Committee?
We had a meeting on June twenty-sixth. We discussed the middle school greenhouse, and the middle school greenhouse has some problems, and we are gonna be, the recommendation to send onto the board is to remove the greenhouse, and it's gonna cost us, I don't have that figure here, sorry about that, but it was gonna be fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars total. The insurance is gonna pay forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, and we'll pay the cost.
Fifty-two, six, eighty-five?
Fifty-two, six, eighty-five. Yeah, that's what the insurance.
Those are shiving, just shiving though, yes.
Sorry, I should've done my arith- arithmetic, my arithmetic.
And that is because of infestation of mold?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so for health purposes?
It should go.
It is a recommendation?
It is a recommendation.
So, Steve, if I could ask, so if, I mean, picturing the greenhouse, if it simply is removed, does that mean then that the entrance way just simply gets bricked up? Is that what's gonna happen?
There's a door?
No, they, there isn't, yeah, there is a door, there is. I'm assuming that they're gonna just break it up, but I didn't ask that question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Will it be replaced with anything?
Let's, let's take this as a motion first, from the committee. Being a motion from committee, it does not need a second discussion.
Will it be replaced with anything?
We had asked Bob Welch about the curriculum, and he said that from April, I believe, or March, March to June, and so, it was suggested that possibly a hoot greenhouse would be purchased for the kids to use at that time, also.
And we were also reassured that the mold was not gone into the building the rest of the building.
Okay.
How old is that greenhouse? Do we have a decision to build anything until we know for sure we have a mold?
How old is that greenhouse? Was that put up when it changed to middle school, or was that part of?
No, that was part of the change of the middle school. It'd be about two thousand.
So, when the high school was built?
Built roughly. So, it's about twenty years old.
And there are various reasons for the mold, but it's just something as informational that they felt they would have to remediate every other year, and they just did not feel they would be able to keep it safe. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, maybe, I wasn't at the meeting, so that fifty-five thousand dollars is a fifty-two thousand, sixty, pretty high price tag, so I'm assuming that that would include removing all the mold anywhere where it is, and getting facade back to the way it normally should function, or is it just removing?
That's the information we got.
Yeah, it's just, I guess, I, I, it just takes me aback a little bit that it would cost fifty-two thousand dollars to remove something. I mean, I can get my sledgehammer out there, bring a dumpster over there, maybe I'll do it for twenty-five thousand. I'm just saying, I just, why is it so expensive?
When you look at remediation of something like mold or specimens, any of that type of thing, you're looking at some significant dollars for specialists to deal with that. Also, because we're also talking about soil being removed, because that's also permeated into the ground in that area.
There's no cement floor in that building.
There's what?
There's no cement floor in that building.
Oh.
It's, so it's going down into the soil, so the soil has to be dug out.
And then it's also the expense to fix the facade, and.
So, all that's in there?
Yeah, it's not just knocking it down.
Why would it have been built without a floor?
No, there's a pond in there too.
Uh, okay.
And a little fish pond in there.
There is. There's your fifty-dollar house. Bring your fishing pole too.
And I assume that there's no problems at the high school, the high school greenhouse is, is fine. So, what, what did you do different on that one that we didn't do on the other one?
Number one is, a freestanding greenhouse at the high school is so structurally different than a lead-to. You know, to be honest, they wanted us to build a lead-to and recognize that it's not worth having, because in the long run, you know, it's gonna nickel and dime you. So, we, we insisted that we didn't have a lead-to here.
Fair enough.
Jen, is there anything from the old greenhouse, even in terms of materials, that could be utilized by you?
So, it's something that's something to look at?
I mean, I'm just saying, you know, to take, take something down is one thing, but to maybe reuse some of the glass, some of the shelving, some of the, I don't know what's over there, that might be useful.
Pat, I think the mold problem is it.
Yeah.
Well, it might.
Everything's gonna sit out too.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just saying, though, if you, you might be wise, you just take a look. I'm not saying that you'd use it necessarily in this greenhouse, but maybe at the garden outside or somewhere, might be, might be possible.
So, there's a look.
You never heard of a look? Yeah, okay.
What am I asking of him? Okay.
It hasn't been.
Take a clar.
I know.
There is a motion by the committee to remove that greenhouse with the insurance offset. It will be roughly seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-something, I believe. I didn't do my calculation either on it exactly since that began. Further discussion?
Is there a timeframe if we pass this tonight on when that, when that happens?
Before school starts.
Okay, and we have somebody lined up to do that?
Carl, how come I remember a fifteen thousand dollar figure?
Because there's gonna be some landscaping.
Right, landscaping afterwards.
There's landscaping and pavilion work, those, uh, and building on some, there could be additional, uh, beautification, does that work?
Right.
I just made that up, okay.
So, that's a word?
Sorry.
It's a word?
Alright, yes.
Okay, there is a motion. Does that require a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Alright, going on to item eight F, monitoring schedule.
I think you flipped them all over.
Did I?
That's, yeah, that's the next one.
Okay, we've got a draft board monitoring schedule. That is.
It's actually just current year's schedule that was put in there just as a reference as to what we did this past year?
Good. So, with this draft, we can work from that and make determination, at least through the first couple of months. It'd be nice to be able to fill out the majority of the year. Would also be open to tabling until our new district administrators had a chance to review in a little more depth what we have done in the past. I think certainly each of those items are worthy items to have discussed, but we may want to put a specific spin on some of them. So, with that, I'll entertain discussion.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, Steve. I personally, I think there's, everything up there is great, but I, I'd like our new district administrator to maybe look at that. There might be some things on there that he'd like to see come forward earlier in the year, just for informational. That would be helpful as opposed to something that might come next May, when it's like, gosh, we want through most of the school year. So, may, maybe you could make some recommendation on that if you want to, you don't have?
I'd love to. I talked about it with Carol this morning, I believe it was, and I really need to work with my admin team to talk about this.
Sure.
So, we can come up with a, a good plan that's solid and is timely.
Yeah, I, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not really, I, the board can, can weigh in, but I don't think most of these, from our perspective, is, what time of the year isn't, isn't near as important as just getting the information, but it might be much more for you, so.
Thanks, Pat.
I'd like to see us take a look at what we're monitoring and look at our governance, our policy governance manual, because we have some, some expectations outlined in there that we haven't really focused on as directly. And I, I'd like to suggest that we do some of those a little more directly. And some of the things like finance, you know, might be something we wanna look at monthly with the kinds of reports. So, there are some things that.
I, I think, and I think that's subject to our determination on, when, when we look at our monitoring schedule, oftentimes those are a block of, a specific block of time for, for lack of other term, a more in-depth presentation.
Yes.
Whereas something like, the finances, obviously, on a monthly basis, will not have to be as in-depth.
Right.
But more of a snapshot of where we are now versus budget. So, okay, I would also, and we will table this pending your review, I would also ask the board, as Sandy has, whether it's through our policy governance, policy or other means, this is really meant for the board to be able to monitor what's going on, and so, rather than, you know, with all due respect, simply accepting what the administration may come up with, I think we have to make sure that we are looking at what we need to, or feel we need to see as well, and so, kind of a meeting of all groups' minds as to what we come up with.
I, I did attend a pre-EBLEAS convention workshop that was titled Governance Two-O-One: Goal Monitoring and Accountability Plans, and have some worksheets that they presented, as well as information that I'd have to share with you.
I was there. I have them. They're sitting on my desk.
Oh, I printed some out and brought them, but good, good.
That sounds like the very, some sort of thing that Ron had suggested, maybe as a group, we could come together.
Retreat and talk about it.
And kinda talk about. That'd be perfect.
Yeah.
And we really, you know, hopefully, we would have something in place for the August or at the latest September meeting. At least that was what I would hope we would be able to attain, and even if that's just for the first four months, and we continue to work on it to see what we wanna do within following months, that would be fine. But I would like to set the goal that for the August meeting, we have the first four months, which would be October, November, December, and January.
Sounds good.
Very good, thank you. Because, I almost went right over something there. Administrator, Administrator Report?
This is Lori's, Lori, I believe you were involved in working with.
Maureen and I reviewed this prior to her retirement. This is the annual requirement under the Wisconsin Act One Twenty-Five, which, which was passed in, took effect, excuse me, in September of two thousand and twelve, which requires us every year to report to our Board of Education on the use of appropriate seclusion and restraints with students with disabilities and students without disabilities. So, this is the report that Maureen put together prior to her departure. It has the last three years of data for the board to review in terms of that noted restraint or seclusion of students. We are trained using CPI, or Crisis Prevention Institute, which trains using a model called Nonviolent Crisis Intervention. We have two certified trainers in our district, both of actually who I've met since I've been here, so it's always exciting, and you can start to check those off your list. Nikki and Deana do a great job training our staff and allow us to have very, very reasonable numbers and low numbers in areas of seclusion and restraint.
I have a quick question, Lori. I notice on the list of schools, chain school is listed, but the Chain Exploration Center, our charter school?
Yeah, I did ask that question, that it was all wrapped into one meeting. We need to delineate that better as we move forward.
Sounds cool.
Thank you for that, Lori.
And at this point, with the individuals that we have as the certified trainers, the report indicates that they've trained special education staff administrators and other staff members, and other staff members. How encompassing is that as to who does receive that training?
That's a question I couldn't answer for you right now. I don't know what our principals or other end.
So, there's like, my understanding is there's like two different phases of training. Last year, all of our new teachers got a four-hour training. It's like half, half of it's done at that kind of time. I think it's an eight-hour total training.
It's a full-day training for that initial piece, and then the refreshers of our half-day training. And that certification, based on the agency that owns the certification, which would be our school district, I would have to talk with our trainers about how long we certify from a period of one to three years.
Okay, but is what I am hearing, all staff is receiving that training?
It is open to all staff, but I believe the requirement is for special education staff and our crisis teams.
Is there any recommendation as to any level that we should, I, I don't wanna necessarily make something mandatory that doesn't need to be mandatory, but do we want to promote, or would there be a benefit to promoting that voluntary participation?
I definitely would agree. I would agree with that statement. I was a certified trainer for eight years. I think the most important piece that Nonviolent Crisis Intervention teaches is verbal de-escalation, just how to de-escalate a situation when it, when it is starting to escalate. Not that the hands-on piece is probably the, even though people see that as the most important, truly, that verbal de-escalation and how, how those interrelationships between people. So, I, I don't know if I would go to the point, Mr. Johnson, of mandating it for all staff, but certainly promoting it for, for any staff that is interested in being trained in that area.
Can you, Lori, could you give us an example, it doesn't matter at what level, when, when we look at that chart and we look at restraint and seclusion, what, what's your definition of seclusion? I mean, I think we can understand restraint fairly, fairly easily. What is seclusion?
Seclusion under Act One Twenty-Five is a situation where a student is not allowed to leave the environment in which they're in. So, maybe the rest of the class is gone, maybe the student is still in the classroom, but they're not able to leave that room, whether they're in there with an adult, or two adults, or three adults, but you may just be giving them a period to cool off, but they're not just welcome to leave that classroom. There's a specific space where they're staying. So, like a student in an in-school suspension would not be a seclusion, because it is not saying you can't leave this area. They may be using the restroom, getting lunch, et cetera. But a seclusion is usually when a student is escalated and looking at keeping that student safe without going to a point of needing to go hands-on for a restraint.
Is, is there a time when if a child needs to be removed from the classroom, that he's removed from the cla- he or she is removed from the classroom and put into a room of seclusion?
You know, I, I'm hesitant to give you an exa- I couldn't give you an example of that from a pack-up. So, I, I don't think that would be fair for me to, to speculate on in terms of that, of that arrangement, but I would need to talk with staff or principals of what's been done. Typically, when students are struggling with those behaviors, if it's something that we are familiar with and knowledgeable about, that there's some pattern, we would have a behavior plan in place that would develop as steps of what we would do. So, as we see signs or indicators that that behavior may be escalating, then we look at a way to transition a student either out of a classroom or to a different area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
This is also referred to staff who might be out of control, and I.
This report is specifically related to students.
But the CPI certification, though, could be for adults as well?
Absolutely. CPI covers the full gamut. When I did my training ten years ago to be an instructor, there were people from hospitals, from group homes, social workers, educators, so it will expand a number of different professional areas.
Recorder is running, board members are.
I should've asked it that.
I should have asked it that.
The majors?
Just say on stage.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to formally accept the report? I presume we do. Is there a motion to formally?
It's informational only. No action is required.
All right. Then I feel more uncomfortable than, not breaking the rules and becoming restrained. Okay, item two G would be our year-to-date expenses versus budgets. May I try?
So I talked a lot about over the years, since 2011 at least, and since I've worked here, that we only take what we need. Lakota have their principle in mind, the Native Americans, and we only take what we need. And so since 2011 and 2012 school year, this district's fund balance, and I talked about fund balance increased to, 2011, 2012, to 2016, 2017, increased $2.2 million. At the same time, we were taxing $2 million underneath the law of revenue cap and our health insurance, so it was being reduced at about a 30% from where it began. That all contributed to the increase in fund balance, and we only took what we need. And then last year happened. And last year happened, and the idea was to right the ship, I believe. And one of the things that happened at the July board meeting is I kind of gave a narrative that when the budget is set in October, anything that comes over across you with a memo that has money associated with it, potentially, you know, take a double look and ask the question, is it in the budget? Well, this year, the board indeed did that. And I thank them for that. I have never had a deficit in my entire career. This is the third district I've been at, and I took it, even though the four agreements say don't take anything personally, I took it quite personally. But this year, a different story. She, in front of you, shows you a couple things. It's going to show you revenues versus expenditures, and we have basically, our audit team came in for one day, and our operating transfer has been made. All our accounts receivables are in. This would show probably in August slightly, but it shows that in the expense line, in the revenue line, that the bottom line to this year's budget, I believe, is there will be a $501,000 surplus. And that is to do with expenditures are definitely within $119,000, a little exceeded. The, the budget for Fund 10 was $25,615,443. And all said and done, it came in at $25,734. Basically, $119,000, I guess, over expenditures were over. That's basically contributed to most, mostly in the maintenance area, some of the things. But the revenue line, which is the balancing component to that, is what are your revenues? What are your expenses? What are your bottom line when all is said and done? And the Fund 10 revenues came in higher than suggested, $635,000. It's still probably within 1% of the budget. It's a $26 million budget each way. So you factor those two factors in, and I'm looking at basically right now, $501,000 revenues over expenditures, which means that we're starting to regain our financial position in the state. Remember, we're one of the five school districts in the state of Wisconsin that taxed at least $2 million underneath the lawful revenue cap. We don't short-term borrow. We are healthy fiscally. And as you see that sheet in front of you, yeah, it says $516,000. That's the number I circled, because we're still, we're in the, we're moving, things are moving a little bit. We received another $10,000 today in revenue for last fiscal year, so that increases at the $516,000. There are some expenditures in there, but we know what's on the books that hit $104,000. That's accounted for, because that's encumbered. So we're looking at, and things could change, but they won't change much. So we're looking at, we're back on track fiscally moving forward. Our year-to-date came in well. So that's this fiscal year. There'll be more to come, exact numbers, but we'll be within that ballpark going forward. When I talked about, Pat, I'm not sure who was...
As you say, you're saying, moving forward, you don't see any major changes. Are there any large expenses that you know of that are coming that were not budgeted for?
No. Everything's accounted for.
Good. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. I just, I didn't, I can't recall, perhaps it's the age, or, but I don't know who exactly was at the personnel meeting. Pat Reed at the meeting? Okay, so I didn't want to reiterate things that were talked about, but as far as this year's budget, how we're moving forward, the reason we were able to settle at a 2.44% is because of the state budget. The commonalities coming together of the Republicans and Democrats and the Joint Finance Committee basically worked together. And the preliminary budget snapshot on April 9th basically showed about $168,000 shortfall going forward. And then as, but that, I arbitrarily made some reductions myself as, through attrition in that number. And if indeed that wasn't made, it was close to $368,000. But when all was said and done, when the Joint Finance Bipartisan Committee met collectively together, there's two components that worked in our favor to get us to settling this year's budget and basically our salary fringe, which is 75% of our budget. One of the things was the revenue limit per funding per pupil was $175 increase in fiscal 1920. And basically, that revenue limit, it had not been on, that's, that's an increase. So that gave us an additional $128,000 in this year's budget. And then they also indicated that there'd be a $25 per pupil aid increase, which is, there's two mechanisms of basically revenue. 96 or 97% of our budget is derived from general state aid or, and property taxes. And the only way the revenue limit increases is really based upon, it hasn't increased. It's basically flat-lined. It rolled with literally your pupil enrollment, up and down. And then there's a whole harmless provision in that to say you can't get less than what you had before, but then it's based upon three-year average, and if you're declining enrollment, continues to go in that direction. Consequently, your revenue limit goes down. School districts throughout the state, the idea during Act 10 was to, rather than put money on the revenue cap, which individuals were used to having, they would increase it every year to make that go up with, basically somewhat, they tried to keep it with the Consumer Price Index, but they never did. But literally, they would throw some money at it, maybe $100, $100 per pupil. And that adds up when you have 2,600 students or 2,300 students. But consequently, that then increased for years. But this year, they're throwing $179 on the revenue cap. That increased. And then the per pupil amount, which is about $1 million, they decided to give all that increase in the per pupil aid outside the revenue limit, basically straight cash. If you're a business manager, you can look at it a multitude of different ways, but I'll take the cash any day of the week, whichever way they give it to me. And there's controversy both ways, per pupil, and I'm like, I don't really care. I just want the cash. And so they gave us a $25 increase for our per pupil aid, which already was into about the $654 or something like that. So consequently, that added another $106,000 to that $300,000 that we had hanging out. So when all was said and done, and it's early still, it's not October, there's still be moving parts, we were within $32,000 of a $26 million budget, meaning we're basically balanced a budget. The board used that, that information, and they made the decision to satisfy 75% of their salary fringe budget, or the budget itself. They made a decision to approve salary increases. So those are factors that contributed for us to get into the next realm of next year's budget, which basically is a balanced budget. I see that as a balanced budget. It will be a balanced budget in October when it's all said and done. And then last year's budget came in to $500,000 to be good. So that's the fiscal position we're sitting in right now. I didn't prepare that well for this, but I had a quote, so that is worth something.
So, so bottom line, a per pupil increase for the District of Opaquah will be what for 1920? And 20, and then the subsequent year?
Let me see. My, my data shows, well, I have the dollar figures. The dollar figures is the per pupil, on the revenue cap, is $179 increase, and it was zero before. So it was nothing. 179 times line six. Line six is basically a three-year rolling average number. And then $25 additionally on top of the 600 and some dollars they were giving us per pupil now. So we're getting basically, and per pupil calculation aid, about $1.3 million. I think I'm splitting all everyone's survey. But so, that's where that came from.
Okay. So I just saw recently that Governor Evers, with his veto pen, figured out 87 more million dollars in the state, and there's about 87,000 students in the state of Wisconsin. If they do dole that out proportionately, that would be another, in your estimation, $100 per pupil for our district?
It's really hard to say. They might base that, a lot of times they base it on sparsity aid or, or different economic, and we're not certainly in those situations. So how they, they, they may not necessarily, they may go back to a two-thirds funding mechanism and do, try to do that methodology. So that's why I just calculated what if. I just get the two revenue sources, the revenue cap and the per pupil aid. I didn't include the special education additional money, because it's a year out. But that would be additional revenue in the next fiscal year. It's always a delayed revenue, special education revenue. Another thing this district will have going for them is we're debt-free as far as Fund 39. We have no debt that, which I personally can say that. And so, it's debt-free, and we do, the only outstanding that we have is three more years of short-term loan on the stadium, which is $216,000 a year on the revenue cap. Once that is out of the revenue cap, our revenue cap will increase that dollar amount. It shortens our, it actually lessens our revenue cap by 216,000. But that, that, that bridge is coming as well. So that'd be our last debt. And one of the things you, I've been saying for a while, we paid for the interest for three years with key, I have a great staff, that they, they kept on watching local government investment pool and percentage rate for vesting all the donations and all the million dollars. Before we had to pay any bills, we got in, we used that four-month window to maximize our cash, and we maximized interest, and we paid for three years' worth of the interest for the million dollars already. So we paid that upfront, so we already took that in our interest revenue. But all said and done, this district's in a really healthy fiscal position moving forward. And do we have a lot of work to do? Sure. And, but that's how I see it.
Any, go ahead.
It's great news.
Sure.
I don't know. It's the same.
Any large capital expenses coming up? We realize that there were some issues with the roofs this winter.
The roof replacement project at the middle school was the most pressing. That's in the budget. We've been able to manage our maintenance within the Fund 10 budget going forward. There's usually actually $200,000 to $300,000 outside. If you go back a few years, we were able to replace all the district's safety and security and bulletproof glass and those things within the budget. We're, so we did the same wood hole too for the parking restructuring, or things such as that nature have been within the budget. So the roof project that the board did approve for this fiscal year, which is in play, I believe, they're doing it right now. The middle school is a major, is our major capital project. Other than that, they're just minor repairs. The greenhouse, I would consider a major capital project. Of course, it's only costing $7,000. Only, I suppose that's not a good choice of words, but indeed, those are the major projects. And the rest of the roofs that were, are out being solidified basically as we speak, in their minor repairs compared to the middle school.
Okay. Acknowledge mechanicals are all okay, or do you have anything?
Well, we know that the automated, we know that, and that's within the budget, so I, not including as capital project. One of the things we've been able to determine is that our automated logic, which controls all our HVAC systems in here, they were, they're antiquated. They were over, I believe, over 10 years old, so they weren't communicating correctly. So that has been replaced within the maintenance budget already. And then there's other mechanicals that are being repaired as far as boilers and HVACs and compressors and things such as that nature. But some of them have been covered with insurance, and, and the rest would be out of this budget, but they won't be capital expenses. It'd be within the budget. If I have capital projects that will come forth, I don't see any, but I would bring it to the board.
What about the chain school roof?
Chain school roof is one of those issues that is not a major issues. There are minor issues that just been, that are being addressed. They'll be addressed at some point.
Carl, I know it's, it's only three years out. You mentioned short-term borrowing for the next few years. Is there any advantage to try and pay that off early if we could?
Oh, not short-term borrow. It's short-term, like a kind of loose subject for me.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Short-term.
We don't short-term borrow, because you pay the interest and...
Right, right. But the, but the one that the 200 took, is there any advantage to that, or is that not even worth?
We're paying it off. The way it's set up, no.
Okay.
So, but that was a way to bridge the gap to get our whole stadium without a referendum.
Right. Okay.
And the numbers I can just provide it on the sheet. It says 6/2019. Does that end up the month?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We're being done. We will move on to our budget turn report.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Megan Sanders. I'm on the Governance Council for the Charter School. So it's been a very exciting year. I can't believe a whole year has, just step by, I can't believe a whole year has gone by. So I just want to give a little background about why we are doing the monitoring and how it came about. So when you have a charter with the school board, so you have your charter contract. So we set out and we had monitoring-ish. And when we went to go apply for the federal grant that we received, which was $650,000 over five years, one of the requirements was that the monitoring was more in-depth and not as loosey-goosey and, you know, kind of concrete details what we're going to provide. And so, that kind of brings us to this annual report that you guys were provided with. Before I get started on the contract and going to this, I just really wanted to say thank you again to the board. It is really such an incredible opportunity for the entire team involved, the, you know, Governance Council and creating that, and including more parents on a different level. And the teachers and the opportunity to say yes to students when they were told no, you know, it was not in, in the parameters of what they were able to do. And I think the freedoms that I've seen Rhonda have, and, you know, it has really changed the dialogue from how we started and to how we ended the year. And the teachers show up every day, and I'm really amazed at the humility that they put forth and their willingness to take criticisms and to learn from them and grow from them. And our school would not be what it is today without Rhonda. And I really, the culture that she provides at the school is just, it's a giant family there. And that, I will say, goes for the Chain Exploration Center and the Chain and for kids there. So you would never know that there's three schools in one with the job that she's doing. So I just wanted to say that before I get started and acknowledge everybody. Okay, so in our contract that we agreed upon, one, in Section 12.2, it says the Governance Council Annual Report. So we have items listed, and I'll give Rhonda the stage after, so that she can talk about pieces that are more applicable to her. Our first one is this Treasures Report, and it says, including budget versus actual fundraising and grant proposals and a budget plan. So in the report, we, and I'm not going according to this, so I apologize for that. I'm not going in order. So in the report, what we did to break down is we took Fund 10, which is the, the money that each administrator is given, and the building. And so then we took Fund 10, and we looked at budget versus actual for that and provided in chart. Then we also broke down the federal grant dollars for this year, which were $154,859. And so we looked at what we budgeted to begin with, with the federal grant dollars. And so we looked at what we budgeted to begin with with the federal grant dollars and then what we actually spent and then. So we were only allowed to carry over ten percent. That goes for all schools for the federal grant. And we are carrying over close to five thousand dollars, which I was pretty excited about. So pretty good for our budget. As far as next year, we did just receive information and we are scheduled to spend a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars next year. And so that budget will get uploaded. We are working. Rhonda, Carol and I will be claiming the rest of the funds on Monday or Tuesday of next week, Tuesday. So we have a meeting scheduled to do that. And then hopefully, I'm hoping we can just do it once if all of the POs came through and we're not still waiting on obligated things. But so that's where we are with that. And then the second year budget will get uploaded. We'll talk about that as as a whole team. And she'll talk to the staff and we'll decide, you know, what are the pieces that are priorities for next year. And so that is information on the grant. Beyond this federal grant, we received eleven thousand dollars in additional grants, which is what you're looking at here. And that does include the community foundation grant, which was given to us by Pat Fair. And we spent that money on the well for the moving the community garden to our property. And so that was greatly appreciated. Some of the other grants we received, we bought eight kayaks this year. So it was pretty incredible to see the kids. I mean, and really the most impressive thing was the teachers organizing the whole activity and being courageous enough to do that. So and I just happened to be there that day during that time and I got to go down there and see all the kids. And I mean, there was girls touching exoskeletons. There was kids out paddling next to a loon. And so the fact that we have that property and we're now able to use it is really incredible. And so I know with the success of that event that that will continue moving forward until the weather freezes again, I hope. So that was some exciting things about the grant. The other things that we did, we had two pretty substantial fundraising events towards the end of the year. So we had our second annual U-Ra-Ra, which is our upcycle recycle upcycle rummage.
Recycle.
Recycle anyways. It it looks really good on paper. But so that is basically a day rummage sale that everybody donated to. And all of those funds will go back to project work and really designated for the kids. The other event that we just had was our golf outing out at Hidden Waters Golf Course here in La Paga. And that was really a fun day. There was, I think, nine teams, nine foursomes, and it was a scramble. And it was really successful. I think we'll definitely do it again next year. And lots of lessons learned. So fundraising was forty-five hundred dollars approximately. We did not provide a budget or a, you know, I guess detailed look at what funds were fundraised. And Fund Twenty-One is also not included in here. And so that's something to consider for next year and moving forward as something that we are aware that we we would like to include. Okay, and then the facilities report is the next thing on the contract. And so I'll let Rhonda talk about that here in a second. The staffing also, Rhonda, and then the CEC enrollment, including student population and student diversity. So the last item here is aside from performance measures with regards to curriculum. The last item is the annual meeting report and including the demographics of our Governance Council. So our Governance Council this year, we got two new members. One, one some of you may know is Lori Wagner. She worked for CISA Six. And she was instrumental in developing the evaluation system that is currently being implemented in this district. So she and she has administrative knowledge. And so she's been really helpful to have on the board and just great insight and just, you know, another eyes. The other person we just added at our annual meeting and her name is Sarah Zeller. She owns Service Master here in town and she's also a parent. So that puts our board at six voting members and our student rep. So our student rep this year, I think when we got started, we didn't know exactly how we were going to use him. And one of our ends goals is a Twenty-First Century Skills Rubric. And that was something that we decided that we would commit to in the federal grant. And something that we wanted for our students is to say in eighth grade, you should be able to do these things in the Twenty-First Century Skills that we're choosing and that we think are important for our students to know. So Jack Snyder was here at the middle school and at the high school asking teachers, asking ninth-grade teachers, asking A-three teachers, what do you need your kids to know coming into high school that they're not currently proficient at? And how can we train our students to be more capable learners and more prepared just based on maybe technology skills or presentation skills or organizational skills? And so that is a rubric that we are working on at grade levels. They're in in the appendices. It's very small in this. It's larger online. But we are currently working on it. But I wanted you guys to be able to see. And I didn't want it to be something that we were just shuffling out as fast as possible. If it takes another year, I'm fine with that. I just really want it to be quality. And it's been a really great conversation. So Rhonda, Holly Olson, Jack Snyder and myself have sat in a room for several meetings now and had really great conversations about what do we expect from on all levels, what do we expect from our students? And so it's been great to clarify expectations and it's been some really productive conversations. And it was nice to have Jack on board. I don't know. We'll have we really need a new member. So if anybody knows anyone, send them. But he was so great. And then so at our annual meeting, we also did a self-evaluation as a board. And so we I sent out a survey ahead of time asking, you know, how kind of just to clarify what our expectations are of each other and then how do we think that we're performing? One of the questions that I asked was something to do with setting policy. And so it was an interesting response because in my head I was thinking, well, we don't set policy. And then, you know, there was different opinions. So that also provided a really great conversation and some new steps moving forward for how we schedule the meeting or how we structure the meetings each month. So and then some different things. We're waiting on our five oh one C three status. So we sent that in. We submitted Form nine ninety, which is the tax form that goes with that. The big thing this year was Suzuki. So that was something that we worked on the entire year. I think when we when the community met and they said we want a different option for our students, part of that was that we kept hearing was that they wanted a string. They wanted string orchestra. And so Rhonda and I kind of and, you know, everybody was kind of beating their heads against the wall trying to figure out how we were going to get it done. And it was through so many different works trainings and just trainings that came from the federal grant that we were able to connect with different schools that kind of told us to look inward at our own budget and kind of came forward to you guys with the new proposal to to trade things out and to make those sacrifices so that we could provide something different. So right now we have a contract that has been presented to us by the Suzuki Center and UW Stevens Point. And so we are currently having a lawyer review it. And then once it is approved on that level, then we will bring it before our Governance Council. And we will sign it and move for next year. We did already order the instruments. So that was a happy moment. Sandy was there and we were just like kids on Christmas morning. And I think both of us teared up a little bit with excitement just seeing it finally happen for the kids. And then another big thing that we worked on all year was the community garden. So how we were going to move that and then what what was the concept going to be? How was it going to change? We were not going to be able to replicate what Pat and his team were doing over the last ten years with producing tons of food for local organizations. Realistically, in our first year, that wasn't going to be possible. So a team set out to decide how they wanted how they wanted the plan to go. So I think currently it's set up in quadrants. And there was a survey sent out to local residents. So there are some local plots over there as well as some cover crops and student experimental sections. So I know there's a hay bale. I don't know how it's doing. But the other person that has put in so much time is Dan Riley. And I really don't know what we would do without him. So seeing seeing him out there on the tractor plowing on a snowy day, I can't I don't know how somebody does that. So and then sweating in long sleeves putting up the deer fence. I so he's amazing. We I just can't thank him enough. And then, okay, so also at our annual meeting, we set our future goals. So some of the things that kept coming up were community involvement. So we are striving for more partnerships. We I lost the page. I'm sorry. There's so many. Here we go. Continue to recruit more members. We are starting a robotics team and hopefully partnering with WLC. I know John Erskine was expressing an interest in that as well. We are continuing to develop the website. So there's been some asks for more curriculum information on the website. So that's something that is a goal for this year. And then our Twenty-First Century Skills Rubric. And to continue developing our personalized learning plans for the students, which Rhonda will talk about here in a second. But those are some of the goals that we identified during our annual meeting. So it's been a very it was exciting to have the meeting and to, you know, have a whole year gone and kind of reflect on everything that we've done and and look at. So it was a good exercise. But with that, Rhonda finish.
Okay, thank you. My part starts on page ten and it's more the day-to-day things that the students would have experienced through the project cycles and the advisors' experience of teaching. And Lori Kay is here now and she'll be the first to say that this was the hardest she's ever worked, but also the most rewarding. And that was just all I keep thinking too is that thank you for having this opportunity for our students in our district to just have this different experience because they they just loved it and they gave their teacher's standing ovation that last day. If you have any question, I guess I'd direct your attention also to the appendices because in that you'll see samples of what's in a student's personalized learning plan. They do have a project form they have to fill out for each time they are proposing something they want to study and that goes to their parents and it outlines what the steps are and what they have to turn in at each time. They also have to keep track of the standards they're they're covering. That's in their online PLP. These are continuing to be developed because the district as a whole is working on learning targets and we'll be right there doing that same thing. In addition to covering the academic standards, like Megan said, we do have the Twenty-First Century Skills Rubric that each project is graded on and then across time. So across all their projects through a whole year, we're expecting a growth and that is one of our grant goals. And the page I did report last month about some of the forward testing, not the forward. Forward will come soon, but this was the eye ready. And we expect that to be mirrored in the forward. But I reported that last month that one of our goals was that we have to be our students have to perform as well as the the rest of the district. They have to show that increase in Twenty-First Century Skills. They have to administer or implement their own personalized learning plan where they mark their progress. And they have to have a lot of hours of community service and that has to be documented. So all of those goals we met.
Excuse me, Rhonda.
Yes.
What are the eye-ready tests in the district? What part of the year?
September and then January and again in May.
Okay, good. So you get a whole year's snapshot of sixes.
Yes, yes. Enrollment, we were a little bit over enrollment, if you'll remember at the beginning of the year. We came to you and asked to go over because we didn't want to turn anyone away. So in our demographics, I looked compared to the rest of the districts, we're very similar as far as economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities and the different races. No English language learners, but that's right in the same averages as the rest of the district. We did have ten students that are not going to return to the CEC. And that's some that's at first you might see that that sounds kind of like a lot. But really, when we looked at other schools and at an implementation depth, that's really kind of common because it's a it is a totally different experience. And we did do an exit survey on why they were leaving and really no pattern came out. Some were wanting to go to a religious school. Some missed their friends at the middle school. There were some that they want to ban to be more accessible. Really no pattern. But the waiting list is so long to get in that their their places were immediately filled at those grade levels. I guess if you have any questions, you can either ask me or you are required or I guess asked to respond to us at the next at your at our next meeting on what you thought of our annual report and give us suggestions for improvement or things you wanted to know. Oh, we were featured our PLPs were featured in this book. I can pass this around. This was exciting for us. Our first year we're featured in a book on transformational personal learning practices. And we got recognition for that at the Innovative Schools Network Conference this past spring.
Rhonda, you this the school year coming up, you will be increasing your student load.
Yes.
And how if any does that pose some concerns from your perspective? I mean, is it just going to be a continuation of the same? Or are there some concerns about, you know, housing or maybe the I mean, it's a bigger group.
Yep.
So obviously, there's going to be more things to be concerned about.
So there's still a limit of eighteen per per grade level. And from second to third, we're not quite at that. We're at sixteen and seventeen, I believe. But I had to go back and forth with the teachers. They meet every day. Every day is a learning experience. We meet, we group the plan. As to how we would group the grade levels, because the configuration changes each year. Last year was third through fifth. So next year we'll have the fourth through sixth together, second and third by itself. Then what will happen after that? Like, will it always be three grade levels together or should it be two? We've been going back and forth on that. And that will change as we feel it out. You know, this year we'll feel how four, six split goes. Maybe seventh and eighth will be in there themselves. But we will we will never lose the multi-age. That's in our contract and that's part of what our our school will be. So I don't know what the grade level splits will be, but it will be multi-age.
So logistically, lunchrooms, gym spaces, all that are all still pretty good for the majority?
In fact, our new grade room, which is in the facilities, that's our upstairs big room, has proved to be just such a great community building. We meet there several times a day, the whole school. We actually can fit the Chain Elementary School and the CEC all in that room. And it's just really a good community building spot. So we're going to have a great room in the downstairs, also in the big kindergarten room for the younger students.
And looking at the year after, you've been thinking about adding a couple of grade levels on the lower side.
Yes, the following year. Originally, we thought we'd do one grade level a year. But the following year, the plan is now to just bring kindergarten and first into the Exploration Center. Now, so yeah, the kids that are right now in sixth will go to seventh. So adding that grade level is just the students that are already there.
Do you have a feel for what your student enrollment will be this coming? Do you have a feel for what your student enrollment will be this coming year?
Yes, it's in there, 87 right now. But there's six on the waiting list. If any more second or third graders apply, we'll accept them because we still have them.
So with the loss of the 10?
We only replaced eight slots because we're trying to get back to that model where we wanted 18.
So you're at 20, 20, 18, this past year, right?
Yes.
It was an extraordinary year. And we do get comments that people are surprised it's only the first year of operation.
Yes, we get those comments. There's challenges too. I mean, this is a small town and close knit and a lot of people were watching us and parents really wondering, like, am I doing the right thing for my child? Which is so understandable and, and we're happy to be accountable to that and happy to be working together and just being the best we can while still being different, a different attitude.
Do you have any of the teachers present this evening that might be willing to share how they see things as being a little different under the charter school construct versus?
Has had so many years of teaching at a traditional school and so I'm sure you'd like to speak into how it's different.
Sorry to catch you off guard, but I'm going to catch you anyway.
That's okay, yeah, I'm not prepared, but I'll, I'll win it. What I liked was the students taking ownership for their own learning. They were very involved with whatever they were working on as far as a project. They were excited about everything, it seemed like. Just the whole idea of being multi-age kind of added a different layer of excitement and, you know, it was, it was just different for them. From a teacher's point of view, planning was, Rhonda was right. It was a lot of work because you're planning almost three grades, so you're trying to fuse all of that curriculum. So the thing that was really nice in that respect is teachers, is the three of us, the three advisors, working morning. We'd meet at lunch, we'd meet after school and, you know, we had a lot of things, different forms and different things that happened throughout the school that we had, that we weren't aware of or we didn't anticipate, that we had to change and adapt and, and try and keep the students what's best for the students in mind as we move forward.
Did you have any difficulty with parents in terms of, I mean, as those of us as teachers know that oftentimes parents want to see straight roles and straight kinds of learning and aren't as easy sometimes to change as students are? Did you run into any problems with that?
The parents weren't, weren't, didn't, we didn't experience that, I would say. It was more, the parents were upset with our lack of communication initially. And we were naive in assuming that third, fourth and fifth graders would take all these lovely notes we created home and actually give them to their parents. And therefore, we weren't communicating, but it didn't get home to them. So, you know, we had to do-
We thought they'd be different than every other student.
Well, yeah. Well, no, you know, dealing, I used to teach firsts and seconds. So those students brought their folder home every day and mom and dad looked at it every single night. But that's not the case with the older kids. So it was a learning experience for all of us, but I feel we were able to rectify all of the issues.
Thank you. We very much appreciate the time that everyone has put into the charter school. And I know you've been incredibly involved. I appreciate your comments with regard to Rhonda's participation and help Dan's involvement as well as the flexibility of planning of the teachers. So thank you very much. Are there questions?
No, but I have, I have a question, but I thought I would direct this to our new superintendent. I can't remember from the interviews. Have you had experience with charter schools?
I have, yes. In Black River Falls, there was a project-based environmental charter school.
Was it in a separate building somewhat similar to what we're doing here or?
It was a separate building in portable units. And then they had, that was one year. A different year was in a separate building off campus. But it was high school, it was high school age.
Okay.
Yeah.
So somewhat different, obviously, age group here than here.
Right, but it was, had that project-based learning idea similar to what, what's going on here. The idea is to get kids more engaged and interested and involved in the planning and the execution of the learning. So, you know, and the research shows the positive benefits of that. It was, you know, in my notes last week, I got to meet Megan and Sandy gave me a tour and it was pretty, pretty neat.
Yeah.
You guys are familiar, that was the first time I've been in that building.
Yeah.
It's something special.
It'll be a little more energetic in September.
We were pretty energetic.
Is there a vision of going beyond eighth grade yet? First, I mean, we're looking down the road that way?
Well, one of our questions that we always ask when we visit other districts is how do these kids transition back into traditional school if there's no project-based charter school waiting for them? And they always say, well, they know how to learn, they know how to control their own learning, they'll thrive anywhere. However, they would, a lot of them would enjoy going to a project-based high school or portion of that and hopefully maybe also be able to use their string instrument experience.
And Sandy and I did get a chance to go see Ribbon High School. They have a wing of the high school that is project-based and a continuation. They do their charter schools very differently and that they're disconnected. So they all have separate governance councils and they hold separate lotteries. So if you get into the K through two school, you might not get into the three through five. So their enrollment in the high school level was not what I would expect it to be if it was a continuation of the initial plan, I guess, or a K through eight program. But, I mean, in, in my eyes, I would love to see a charter school within this legacy model. I think the school is huge and playing big to house that, but that is for somebody else. I don't think I can handle that.
I'd like to do a shout-out for Megan. She's at school every day, I mean, she is the ultimate volunteer, we're very lucky to have her.
I'll let you get a couple of yours in before I even make my first story. Other questions?
Sister Fair's been working in the garden a lot, so thank you too.
Well, I was impressed with appendix E in here. And I also would have been very, very impressed with this type of mathematics going on at that level.
Oh, I did pick a, you know, a really good student.
Yeah, you did a good one. I was like, wow, that's pretty good.
I don't know what that even means.
I hope she gets to know him next year, maybe.
Anything else?
I'd like to touch on a couple of things. One is, it is really important, we learned this, we're talking with Mark this year too, to talk about what happens in the future. You know, you have strings now, starting at an elementary level. What do we do and plan? Do we create an orchestral opportunity at our, some of our other schools? Something we need to be thinking about sooner rather than later. And there, I, we did brainstorm early on about, oh, a high school or even a virtual school, just different opportunities. So it's not that those things aren't being talked about, but I think really that the focus of the discussion switched to, all right, are there going to be things that are started in this charter school that it would be nice to continue or expand? Because one of the discussions is this serves as a lab school for different opportunities or expanded opportunities and so, so be it. Then I have a comment also about the response. And my thought is that it will be good for us as a board to respond, not only to what they said, but to look at the contract and look at what we said we would do. And make sure that we feel, that we present a perspective on how well we think we've done our part as the authorizers. Now, I have discovered, I mean, I've been really active in a lot of the works trainings. Oftentimes, when I'm there, the people who are representing authorizers are administrators in the school. It might be, I need to find out more. It might be atypical for a board member or even board members to be writing the response. I'm okay doing it, but I do want it to be sustainable. And so, I mean, I'd like to be part of a group working on that and doing something with the full board. But it can't, I don't know if it's sustainable for a board member to be doing that. Like, and, and we do have an annual report due to the DPI, the Charter School Authorizer Report. This is another reason for expanding the approach that we might take in our response because we are asked to provide evidence of the academic performance of the charter schools, which you've outlined, the financial performance of the charter school, which they've outlined, and then other contract terms and expectations, which you've also outlined. But they include what are we doing to make sure this is successful? Because ultimately, if, if the DPI were to decide that our charter school wasn't living up to expectations, wasn't performing, they'd be coming to the board and saying, we fixed this. I mean, we, we heard an example of that at a recent works Zoom conference, so.
Sorry, Megan, I discussed this earlier and I certainly think that, well, first of all, thank you for all the work you put in throughout the year and the half on this. But I do think that we should probably give strong consideration to having a number of individuals involved. I'm hesitant to set up a specific committee for that purpose. However, having potentially less than a quorum of the board involved in discussions on the response would be beneficial. And I only say less than a quorum because you don't have to go through the-
Open meeting.
All postings and all that. More of just a general workshop to discuss not only what's been presented to our board, but as well as, as Sandy has suggested, what our commitments to the charter school were as well and reflection on those commitments through the years, so.
And I do think it's important to involve people like Mark and Rhonda in the discussion too because, and Carl and, you know, Rhonda and Megan at some point also. Because we need their feedback as to what, it'd be good to have a discussion about what worked well, where were some, you know, areas of friction and how can we make this easier for us? This is our first year, it was pretty amazing.
Well, if I can just follow up a little bit with that idea and tack over to the city. The city does a lot of things where they would ask one of the members to be on a board. Most, in most cases, that's a representative of the council, just like we would be representative of this board. And that person then would be on a regular basis giving reports if needed or something were, I mean, they have members who are on airport boards, recycling boards and all of those, which they, they are there to simply listen and to provide whatever information they can. But in reality, those boards run it, just like our charter school would run it. But maybe one of us, a board member, would be sort of designated as a person on the board.
We can't be on the board.
We can't be on the board.
Well, then designated as a person who would at least be in communication on a regular basis.
I attend a lot of those meetings.
Right.
And they're certainly open to all of us.
Correct, yeah. And, and it's wonderful, Steve says that you're doing that. But in the future, we should always make sure that we have one person who's willing to do that, whether it's you or somebody else.
Yeah, more.
Or more, yeah. Sort of find if somebody is willing to do that at the beginning of each year so we know that there's somebody, at least one.
And maybe to report every month.
Yeah, that would be sort of the reason. That doesn't mean that because you can't be on the airport, doesn't mean you can't report at this point.
We, we could talk about that frequency. We also want to be stepping at toes of their governance board by any perceived micromanagement.
That's true, I mean, that's, that's true.
Not that we, not that we would attempt to, but I just don't want that potential interpretation or appearance either.
What updates are nice and it's good for us to know when those projects might suck.
Yes.
You know, because many of us were able to go to those and, I mean, if we could just get that information at, you know, a board meeting that next month is blah, blah, blah.
And, and the charter school does have a website too, near those kinds of things.
Right.
But you're right.
Maybe we're not really good about that. Maybe it would be good if there was just a little update.
Add it to the calendar.
Yeah, just, you know, this is what's going on and whatever.
Okay, we can discuss a little more about how we-
Sure.
-move forward in response to the report. Thank you very much, appreciate your time this evening and your commitment over the last year and a half. That moves us to the consent agenda. Mark, I'm going to ask you, was item C intended to be consent agenda? There was a recommendation in there, but the recommendation obviously is-
I think it's just for annual notice that is given, so that's why it's probably a consent agenda, yeah. There's nothing that's worth shattering there, unfortunately. I mean, it's all good stuff.
Unfortunately.
I mean, it's not a, I don't, in my opinion, it's not really needed to discuss unless there's questions about that, but.
All right.
I have a question about, about that. What's the difference between JV two and JV one?
JV one would be, there are like-
Two JV teams?
Yes. There used to be a like freshman team, but in many schools, they couldn't field an entire freshman team. So they went through a JV one, JV two, concept JV two being-
Many freshmen.
Freshmen and a few sophomores or whatever.
Can I ask a question before, and this has to do, just because we're, consent agenda has a number of the positions that we're filling, but since our, most of our principals are here, are we pretty well set for the coming year in terms of positions? John, are you pretty well set?
Yeah, teacher staff has been prepared and just have to fill a few educational assistant positions for September 1.
And Rhonda, you're set?
Yes.
Okay, how about the high school?
We're awesome.
Yes, you are.
We hired a science teacher today.
Oh, okay.
So we're looking good.
So all of the major positions are filled then, is?
How about the German here?
Frank, can you do it, yeah?
Well, there's licensing issues that we're trying to work the DPI in and around, but unfortunately, it's, it's not a district-level decision. It's a DPI-level decision and what we had anticipated so far hasn't paid any fruits. So unfortunately, that's where you see the unibolt recommendation there for resignation. Because she wasn't given the responses or answers she was hopeful for from the DPI. I reached out to the DPI, I reached out to other contacts too. They're extremely busy this time of the year with all the licensing and dah, 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 dah. But unfortunately, from what I've gathered elsewhere, right now it doesn't look good. And so there's a timing matter going on too with these different aspects. And so to be fair to her, to be fair to us, ideally, we'll see her name back on as a hire. But, you know, we also have to be able to move forward and post for that position if we can't get her licensing figured out. So by accepting this, this will allow us to post for that position. You know, typically we do posting out for a week, give, you know, you set up interviews in another week. That buys us roughly a two-week time period to hopefully get something else figured out with that standpoint. But if we don't, that's two more weeks we have to figure it out and two more weeks to be fair to her to figure it out too.
We, we can't, we can't on an emergency conditional?
Well, you, you could, but again, in the spirit of that, we could be getting into some gray areas there because of the answers we've already gotten back.
Yeah.
And again, it's, it's the fact that she received some of her linguistic certifications in Austria.
Oh, gee.
And so you have international certifications.
Yeah.
Despite living in a German-speaking country for five years.
Oh, boy.
The DPI doesn't just say, perfect, we're good to go. And, and so there's other interesting facts, I don't know if I can get into that. Like, trust me, we're, like, I, she was a great asset to our team. And we, we talked about increasing the contract for next year, we went through that. But unfortunately, again, no one foresaw DPI saying no to this international language certification. So, and again, working with other districts who have bad connections with, they said, did you just miss you? Did you run to regardless?
I've got connections with, they said, did you dismiss you to Jim Ryan's regardless?
Okay. Is there, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I approve of the consent.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Pat there?
Aye.
Steve Hacken?
Aye.
Mark Polbisky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Manu?
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. All right, I'll undertake a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Into closed session.
We adjourn from this into closed session.
Motion to adjourn into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, where in law, where in E deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, um, the investment of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive for a marketing reason, require a closed session specifically to consider an offer to purchase district property. Roll call.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pat there?
Aye.
Steve Hacken?
Aye.
Mark Polbisky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Manu?
Yes.
Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steven Dunn? Yes.